Good evening, welcome to the City Council meeting of Wednesday, November 2nd, 2011. Could I have a roll call, please?
Andrea Burns.
Present.
Justin Cobb.
Ron Chatinoff.
Present.
Don Psychowski.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Dan Riss.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve, so I'm gonna do them separately. Could I have a motion for the approval of minutes of October 5th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the approval of minutes of October 5th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. Now I'll take a motion for approval of the minutes of October 19th.
So moved.
Motion and a second for the approval of minutes at 19th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain. So we have three abstentions. Say hello myself and...
How many voted yes?
Do the math?
Eight, oh, five, that's good.
Okay, moving on, communications from elected officials, boards and committees. Counselor Rist.
We have a note from East Hampton Cable Television. Due to Whitebrooke's closing, this meeting will not be rebroadcast on Channel 5 Thursday and Friday, but will be available on www.ecatchannel5.org by Friday morning, in case you really need to watch something important.
And we have no additional correspondence, so Mayor, Communications, Mayor Tosnick.
I wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, pardon me.
I just want to take a moment to recognize what the Police Department, Fire Department, and the Highway Department did during the storm. They were out there, I happened to run into the police chief, he was like working 24 hours straight. He needs a little pat on the back for that. I noticed that the fire chief was doing quite a bit out in the Plains area, checking for wires. And our highway guys and whoever was on those trucks with the wires down, they deserve a hell of a lot of credit. And I just want to personally thank those people.
Yeah, I think as a council, we all agree, that's one thing we don't lack in this town is terrific city workers and dedicated workers, so, thank you. Counselor Hagan.
Just a quick, obviously I agree with everything Counsel Psychowski said, but I also want to thank the residents, because I've been driving around Precinct 1 the last couple of days, and everyone that I've met outside while they're, some are frustrated because there's still a lot of power out around Loudville and out there. Most of them are, you know, being pretty, pretty good about it, so I just wanted to thank the residents too.
Great. Okay, thank you, now Mayor, I'm sorry.
I just, yeah, I wanted to thank Mayor Tosnick as well. He's, we set up, well, he did, basically, with, with Robin from the community center meals the last couple of nights that are also going to be left over. Food tonight is going to be served at the community center. So, he did a wonderful job of, of sending communications out to everyone, letting them know that it was happening, the warmers shelter, the food. The council on aging was involved, Gary was bringing people. It was an incredible event, you know, just incredible coordination of people and, and, you know, everybody stepped up, so, just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Now it's your chance, Mayor Tosnick.
That's okay, I, I need to echo what Counsel Psychowski said. We declared a state of emergency at 6:00 PM on Saturday night, and EOC is continuing to operate. We've been fortunate, we have an incident command vehicle here, so we had internet access through that, all through this. Unfortunately, the people we were reaching out to, many of them didn't have internet access, but we were able to get to a lot of the folks with smartphones who still had some connections. We are still offering a charging station at the public safety complex from 5:00 to 7:00 tonight, is another hot meal, this one being served at the community center. Robin Bilecki and her crew of volunteers have been wonderful, we called them out early. Robin needed to deal with food that was going to spoil in her stocks, and so we, we used the facilities at 32 Payson at the safety complex to put two meals together. Mike Superson has been wonderful, Biggie Supermarket. Thank you to Police, Fire, DPW, they're not done. The chiefs are not done, I just got off the phone with Chief Mauder before I walked in. As you probably know, he is the emergency management director, he's in charge during a state of emergency, and so we're working through all of that. The vendors that we've needed to talk to, to get emergency supplies, to get fuel for our master generators, to, to, to MEMA staff who've been helpful in getting cones and other activities, this has been quite a disaster. We had 100% no power. Both substations at Feedy Stampedon were down. Both substations also had storm-related transmission problems, and so they did not even get power from the high tension lines. So the very first part of this effort was to bring the high tension back to the two substations. Tom feeds one circuit, and the Gunn Road Substation feeds three other circuits. We still have about 25 or 30% of the community without power. I don't have power on Andrew Street, there are, there are areas in the, in the southern section of town that there's, there was serious disruption because of the damage that was done, the trees. There are areas along Loudville and Glendale that don't, that don't have power, there are streets, between streets, that don't have power. We've been feeling a lot of questions, a lot of credit goes to everybody who's, who's been on the phone, who's, who's managed to play any part in this storm. We've discovered some things that we want to do, you may be aware that on the capital plan is an effort to connect this building with that emergency generator. Clearly, it's necessary. This building offers an awful lot of, in the way of facility, if we needed it for shelter, we weren't able to use it because it was cold. It's difficult to use the safety complex for those purposes because of the emergency vehicles and all the traffic, there's a danger there. I gotta tell you, the fire, the fire department staff was wonderful, we took over their kitchen, they, they were helpful, we cleared out a couple of bays so we could do the hot food program. The shelter at Smith Vocational continues to operate this evening, I believe it's going to close tomorrow.
Yes.
The estimate is that by the end of the day tomorrow, we'll have 90% of the power returned in East Hampton. There are still going to be some folks, and I suspect some of us in the southern part of town, that are going to go another cold night tomorrow night. I think that most people who are near power are going to get power tomorrow. Crews are working right now in three places in East Hampton. We're trying to restore power to the high school so that we can open school, I don't know if we're going to do it in time for the superintendent to be able to make that call for tomorrow. We've got two crews in the southern section, we, there were some issues that we've had to deal with, we've, we've had personal, I've had personal conversations with Peter Clark at Western Mass, we've tried to work through some issues that have happened in the field, you know, there was mistakes making, made here and there, some by our guys, some by others, but we'll, we'll get through all that as we go. It, it has been quite the challenge for everyone.
Counselor?
I don't know if you want to publicly comment, but I, I will. I've heard from our Director of Public Works, and I've talked to people who know that the police chiefs, fire chief, and Joe are very unhappy with the lack of coordination and communication from WIMCO. And I believe this body, and hopefully if you have the same feelings, after this is all done, we ought to find out why they can't talk to the public service officials, tell them what's going on, because they know nothing. Joe tried, he said, to get coordination with them, even to help them with tree removal. It seemed as though there was a lack of supervision in our area and a lack of coordination. You know more about it, Michael, and this is just me off the cuff, but I've heard from a number of people that aren't happy with the lack of, nobody knows what's going on when they call the police department or anything. And I'm wondering, if you have those same feelings, if after this is done, we can't talk about them learning a lesson in how to manage this, because it seems to me, a phone call to our chiefs might have been in order, to let us know what's going on. I mean, do you have any better information about this lack of coordination?
I can't, I can't speak to what, what conversations you may have had, I, Chief Mauder and I have been on the phone with Western Mass almost on the hour. Getting through has not been an issue. Talking to their command center has not been an issue. We've had all their phone numbers, we've been able...
And I got bad information?
No, 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 your information's not bad, maybe the way that it was portrayed to you is, there is confusion, there is a need to do a debriefing on this. This has been the worst disaster that Western Mass has ever seen, Western Mass Electric, this is the worst disaster they have ever seen. This is the biggest loss of facilities that they've ever suffered. I'm not making excuses for them, there is a lot that can be learned from this. I don't find it particularly helpful to do that during the response, but yes, after this is over, there needs to be, and I think there will be, I think regionally there'll be a debriefing and a discussion about protocol. One of the problems that we have here in East Hampton is that we have jointly owned poles, and I don't know that it's just in East Hampton, but jointly owned poles creates these confusion on the street. If it's a Western Mass pole or a Verizon pole, which crew's going to set a new pole when the top of it's broken off? And if you've got one crew sitting there with a pole on a truck, and it's not their pole, what, you know, why shouldn't they put that pole in place anyway if they're jointly owned? So there are issues to be dealt with, and I think that a debriefing after the fact will be very helpful, but at present, there are crews from all over the, this, this end of the country, in East Hampton and the surrounding communities, trying to get us power back, and, and we're going to try to work as closely we can, as we can with them for now. But yes, I agree that there needs to be a conversation.
Thank you. Counsel Psychowski.
I have one question, Mike. I heard over the grapevine, I think it could be a big problem further on. For fueling our emergency vehicles, a lot of them had to go up to Hatfield to the state garage to get fuel, because we don't have, we don't have a generator online at our fuel distribution place at the Highway Department?
We didn't when they had the, let me, let me back up, because you need to understand the full picture. There is an agreement through the Mass Emergency Management Group that we use state or federal facilities when they're available. When the power first went out, there was no backup, there is no permanent backup generator at the, the highway garage, and so yes, they were going to Mass District 2 in Hatfield to fuel up. During that time, I called in our electrician, and we did connect emergency power to the fuel pumps, and so that, that, that time that they had to be out of town getting fuel was pretty brief. And we've been fueling our own vehicles all through this with our own generators.
That is a problem, my, my problem with it is, was just to bring up that if we didn't have a generator down there dedicated to that system, it's about time for us as a community to think about putting one in.
It's about time for us to figure out a lot of things, Don, but it all takes real money, and we can wish for the world, I want to give all of our guys credit, they've worked very hard, second guessing how they got fuel or where they're getting fuel from is not our job. I agree that we need to look at what kind of capital needs to be made, but let's not try to make political hay out of this today.
It's not a political hand, Michael, I'm not playing political, politics with this issue, this is a safety issue.
Okay, let's, we'll just keep it...
And the thing of it is, with this, with this issue, with this issue, we used to have a 5-kilowatt surplus generator in this town when the first surplus equipment was coming in, it's gone, where the hell is it?
Okay, thank you for your comment. Did you want to move on?
Yes, of course. I have a couple of items, you have correspondence to the Bike Path Committee with regards to the property at 101 Park Street, I think that communications have, have gone back and forth, and I do believe that the committee is, is going to work diligently to get an answer, but unfortunately, I believe that they're not scheduled to meet till the end of the month, so this is going to have to take the kind of time that's required to get a response.
We're gonna, we're gonna work it out.
Yeah, and, and as soon as I get something back from the committee, I'll be, I'll be happy to declare it surplus if that's what, if that's what the committee believes needs to be done. A couple of other items that aren't on your agenda that I wanted to bring to mind, there's a, there's a memo, I think that maybe, maybe made it to your desk, to the School Building Committee Chairman, and we have a tentative agreement with the Mass School Building Authority on the new redrafted budget for the high school project, and it's really good news for the taxpayers. It brings the project cost to our taxpayers from just under 18 million to just over 15 million, so it's about a $2.7 million savings. MSBA was very willing to look at the way that they cast the budget when we gave them the estimates, and willing to listen to the explanations that we had for why these new numbers all fit under their funding program, and, and they did agree, and so they've essentially picked up a significant portion of this project by allowing costs that were bid to be covered by their grant program, and so it's a huge savings for us, and I think that it bodes well for the school building authority's experience. You recall, when we first started, we were kind of the, the first class, and we were having some difficulty, you know, getting to meeting the minds with them, but I think that they've got some experience under their belt now, they've seen some bids, they've seen some projects, they've been out of our project, and we're very comfortable with, with what they've recast for a budget. So, all in all, we've, we've been able to borrow 14 of that 15.1 million dollars, and so I'm certain that the Finance Director will be able to close that gap. We are looking at probably doing some energy conservation work, and I think that we're talking now about maybe merging those two projects for a single bond to, to close that, that high school funding gap. And the, the last thing I wanted to mention, I believe that you've gotten the results of our, of the DOR's return from last year, free cash and retained earnings.
I don't have it, do we have it? No. Did you get it?
I think it should have been in an email, and I thought all the city councils, I apologize, we'll make sure that you get a copy of it. General Fund free cash was certified at $526,273, and Enterprise retained earnings was certified at $359,427. So that's good news from the perspective of having some money at the end of the year to be able to invest. The Enterprise retained earnings are the result of mostly increased revenue, which is, which is a good thing. If we can, if we can look at those revenue projections moving forward, it closes that gap that exists in the current budget. You recall, we're using a significant amount of retained earnings in the current budget to, to fund operations. This additional revenue stream is clearly going to be something that we can count moving forward, so it will help us close that gap. It doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't mean things are rosy, but, but it's good news from the perspective of being able to operate those, those departments within their funding source, and not necessarily needing retained earnings or a significant amount of retained earnings going into next year. The, the Board of Public Works met this evening, we have some pretty serious capital issues that, that are coming forward from Enterprise, a couple of vehicles that have, that have given us some trouble, and so we're, I'm talking to them now about how they want to position us moving forward, how much that they think that we'd like to still retain to help next year's budget if it's necessary, and then we'll be putting the capital plan together for that and, and moving forward. I wanted to, to caution all of us on the free cash from the general fund. All of that money is returned money, all of that money came back from the departments, there's no, there's actually an income shortfall in our general fund, and so our general fund was about $100,000 short of our estimate. And so that was essentially uncollected property taxes, because we collect property taxes in, in future years, it's not really of a significant concern in, in the grand scheme of an 18 million dollar collection, but $526,000 of that 526,000 was returned by the departments, and so that money is available because departments didn't spend it in fiscal 2011. So there's not anything that we can really look at in free cash that can support ongoing operations. It's certainly available to help us replenish the rainy day fund that we took some money out of, it's certainly available for one-time capital planning, and we'll talk about that as, as a, as a city, the departments, and we'll come up with some plans to, to talk to you about. But I've already heard folks saying, well gee, we should use it for this ongoing cost or that ongoing cost, and I just want, want to caution that kind of discussion, because it's not recurring revenue. Sometimes we have surpluses because we have a, a larger revenue source, and that's going to recur, and then we can look at that for ongoing costs, but in this instance, it's really saved money. It's, it's money that we didn't spend last year, it's great, we have it, it'll come in handy, but it, there's nothing in there that's, that really looks like it's going to give us an opportunity to bring anything back or add any regular ongoing costs. But I wanted to, I wanted to touch base, I apologize, I thought that you all had gotten the DOR memo, I'll make sure that it gets to you in your, in your mailboxes anyway, so that, so that you actually have it in hand. And I apologize if I'm, Counsel Psychowski, I apologize if I was a little short with you, it's been a long four days for all of us, and, and I, I do apologize, I didn't, I didn't mean to, to jump to a conclusion, and, and I'm sorry, we've all been working kind of hard.
That's all right, Mike, no problem.
Counsel. Go ahead, Counsel Hagan.
Just, I agree that there's a time, we'll talk after the, the thing, but one thing that, it was, there was an article in the paper, and I think one thing residents, especially with this nicer weekend coming up, are going to be interested is brush.
Yes.
A lot of the, the residents I've run into are saying, what is the, the thing with brush, and I know that the article is a little, a little confusing, I just wonder if you could explain?
I'd be happy to. And, and I can't give you the definitive, although I'm fairly, I, I was, I was at the supper, so I wasn't at the Board of Public Works meeting. We did request the board to authorize, and I suspect that they did, that we're open six days a week until further notice. So we're going to have the brush facility on Oliver Street open every day, including Saturdays, in the foreseeable future, to help residents deal with this massive amount of, of limb and clearing that they're going to end up having to do. We're, we are, you may have noticed that some of the stuff isn't pushed back off the street yet, that, that's kind of deliberate. In, in a declaration of emergency, if the federal government's going to pay for anything, they have really strict criteria about what you can do before they say yes, and so we can clear the right of way, for the, we can clear the road itself, we can't clear the right of way. So that's why you'll see brush, like, right on the edge of the road.
Yes.
It isn't, partly because we don't have time to do all the cleanup, but also partly because we want to make sure that any of these costs that we're going to incur from here forward are covered under a federal emergency declaration, and that should mean that we'll get 75 cents on a dollar back for the cost. The president, the, I mentioned, I declared a local state of emergency at 6:00 PM on Saturday, the governor declared an emergency at about 7:55 on Saturday, and I believe yesterday the president agreed with the governor's request for a federal state of emergency, and so we should be able to be eligible for disaster relief. From the perspective of constituents, we're also going to inquire as to what might be available to private residences for storm damage, not, not structure damage. We know that structure damage is covered, I'm not aware that, that tree and debris is, but we're going to ask.
Worth a shot. Counsel Rist?
I was just wondering, I, it's probably unlikely, but are DPW crews available in the distant future to help residents get rid of brush if they can't bring it to the garage? I mean, is it possible to have it at this street?
It doesn't appear that way.
No?
Given, given the level of, of cleanup on our own right of way, and the fact that it's already November and winter's coming, and the, the other factor that we're three people down in highway because of the budget cuts, our staff is, we think, I had this conversation with Joe today, or yesterday, we don't think that we're going to have resources to be able to help.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a wonderful question, we were talking about it internally, it just, we're, we're very thin, we're stretched very thin now, and we do need to clean up the city's responsibility, any, any city trees, any debris from city trees, no matter where it landed, and we will do that, but we don't think that, we think because of that, we're not really going to have time to, to go beyond that.
Okay, thank you. Residents that don't normally participate in the Oliver Street operation with stickers?
I believe that the sticker fee for this is going to be waived, again, that's a decision of the board, and I, and as I said, I didn't, I'll find out tomorrow morning for sure, but I believe that the board agreed that, you know, it's going to be open, we're, just bring your brush.
As long as you're a resident, you're...
Yeah.
I'm just curious, Mike, is there going to be a way that residents will be made aware of that decision, so like maybe the website, or?
Yeah, well, sure, yeah.
Check and...
Yeah, the press will, the press, I'm sure, will be all over that, we, we've been doing interviews as often as we can, we can find time for it, the press is interested in getting information. I've done five or six in the last four days, I know that the chiefs have each done some, and so the press is interested in getting the, the information out, we'll definitely try to get it out. This website, during the worst of it, we've tried to update the website as quickly as we can, I had street listings on it, the streets that were closed, unfortunately, you know, some of them opened, so we ended up taking the post down because it was no longer germane. Strong Street is still closed at this moment, and the emergency shelter information was up, I think it's down now, because it was on a timer, but we, we're still having issues getting on the internet. Our internet access here is through Charter Communications, and it was spotty, it was better today, but clearly when Charter didn't have power, you know, we were, we were all kind of in trouble. It is wonderful to have an incident command vehicle at our disposal next door, it's slow, but you roll it outside and it finds a satellite, and you actually can connect to the entire world. So that's, you know, Chief Morrisette, I think, was here when that, when that was assigned to our station, and it's been wonderful, it's been a wonderful asset during this storm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I will start open public hearings, so I have a motion to...
Motion open to public hearing.
Wait, your motion, second, open public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, public hearing is open. Counselor Hagan, you're going to be covering for Counsel Cobb tonight.
Public hearing tonight is to, for the tax classification for FY 2012, this is under Mass General Law 4056, and it's the council's job to determine the percentages of local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property as defined by Chapter 59 2A, including personal property for 2012. Our options are to adopt a single tax rate or to adopt a two-tiered tax rate, one for commercial and industrial, and a different one for residential and open space. As also part of the public hearing, the Board of Assessors has recommended the city council, their recommendations, excuse me, to the city councilor as follows, that we maintain the same residential percentages that, as adopted last year, which would result in one tax rate for FY 12 for all classes of real and personal property, two, not grant an open space discount, three, not grant an owner occupied exemption, and four, to not grant a small business exemption. That information, I would, I guess I'd open it to the public.
Yes, if anyone here from the public would like to address the council concerning the setting the tax rate, okay, not seeing anybody. So I guess some additional comments from Counsel Hagan or other counselors?
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
I just want to say, this is pretty standard, we do this every year, and the thing of it is, I think we should go with the recommendations of the subcommittee and the assessors for single tax rate.
Yes.
I will say that the vote of the subcommittee was 3-0 to recommend the assessors, the recommendation, the percentage of residential to commercial property was essentially the same, it was just a slight uptick in the residential. The tax rate will go up a little bit as, because of the two and a half levy and minus new growth, but I believe, if I recall, you can re, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, we only had like four new homes last year.
Yeah, three or four, I think it was.
Three or four new homes, so, and that would be taxing us within about $10,000 of what can be taxed.
Right.
And we are not setting the tax rate.
Right, exactly, we're not setting the tax rate tonight, this is just the classifications. Any additional comments? Okay, not being seen, Counselor Hagan, over.
I'd like to make a motion that the city of East Hampton set a factor of one for the fiscal year 2012 tax rate, keeping a single tax rate for all classes of property, and to not grant an open space discount, nor a residential exemption, nor a small commercial exemption as recommended by the Board of Assessors.
Can I come?
Okay, a motion, a second, for the previously stated class, tax classification. Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Okay, great, could I have a motion to close public hearings, please? Wait, motion, second, close public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Moving on, back to, we have boards and committees, Rules of Government Relation, Counsel Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President, we are going to have a meeting to discuss the administrative code request on November 16th at 5:30 in these chambers, and at this time, I'd also like to set the public hearing for the administrative code change for November 16th at 6:15 in these chambers.
Okay, so we have, obviously, as it stated, as a motion, and we have a motion for set a public hearing for November 16th.
I have a second on that motion.
15 in those hearings, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Okay, Finance, Counsel Hagan.
I don't believe there's anything additional in Finance, and as far as a next subcommittee meeting, I would assume it's going to be next Wednesday, but I will check with Chairman Compton.
Yeah, I think we can set, we should set it.
Yeah, we will have a, our next meeting then will be at 6:30 at Payson, for, if for some reason there isn't any business, I'll have Chairman Compton.
Right, we can always cancel, but probably better set it. Okay, Finance, Public Safety, Counsel Psychowski.
No report this evening.
Okay, Appointments, Counsel Winnie.
Thank you, Mr. President. The appointment subcommittee met tonight at 5:45 to review four mayoral appointments. The committee voted to, to an extension, or a non-vote, to, with... The committee voted to, to an extension, or a non-vote, to withhold one appointment to the Board of Health, requesting that the individual come in and meet with us on November 15th at 5:30 downstairs in Room 1. So I will get that out of the way right now, so we will be having our next appointments meeting on the 15th at 5:30 in Room 1 or 2, A or B, whichever. 5:30, correct. The three other appointments we would like to make tonight, and I will make this in the form of a motion, and they were voted on as three to zero. The first appointment being Matthew Wisdom to National Pond Committee with his term of expiration of December 31st, 2014. Linda LaBorde to the ECA Plus Committee with expiration date of 12/31/2014. And Robert Harrison to the Housing Partnership Committee with the expiration date of December 31st, 2014.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the appointment of the just three previously read mayoral appointments. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next meeting, which will be November 15th at 5:30 in either Room 1 or 2, will be for, we will ask Mr. Wisdom, Matthew Wisdom, to come in and speak to us about his appointment or his application of appointment to the Board of Health, and we are going to request that Mr. David Gardner come in to speak to us about his appointment to the Planning Board. And then we have a third appointment, Bonnie Johnson to the ECA Plus Cultural Council that will be bringing forth at our next council meeting, which will be November 16th.
Okay, thank you, and would you want to just handle the new business while we're here too?
Well, yeah, I would move that the two new appointments of Mr. Gardner and Ms. Johnson be sent down to Appointment Subcommittee, please.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, to move the appointments of David Gardner and Bonnie Johnson to Appointment Subcommittee. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you, that is all for tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Orders, Counselor Shatsinoff.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report tonight.
Okay, Property, Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last night's meeting was canceled, obviously, because we had no power. We are trying to schedule, we scheduled for November 14th at 6 o'clock, a meeting to continue to review and modify for the review and the modification of disposal requirements for 152 and 154 E Everett Street. We will also, at that time, deal with a joint meeting with the Bike Trail Committee, for the Rail Trail Committee, excuse me, the request for the easement on 109 Park Street. We hope that, at that time, we could resolve that issue and send it to the mayor. At that time, both committees will meet and try to resolve it. There is a financial situation there that we're trying to help the owner with, but in any case, both of those will happen on November 14th at 6 o'clock. That's pending agreement with the chair, Mr. Cobb, who isn't here, so we hope that'll work out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So I believe all our new business is done, so unless there's something else I'm missing, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.